...call his chair to call the meeting to order and then the rest is done. That can be for the minutes, so we show we've had a formal meeting.
Am I in the wrong spot because I'm feeling a little lonely over here?
No, I was encouraging us to make this as informal as we could and not have Jeff and Heather down at the end of the table and all of us.
Ah, there we go.
Yep.
Okay, all right. No, I thought maybe I was in the wrong spot.
Marilyn, do we need to approve the agenda and order priority?
Yeah, but you can't do that yet until you've got a quorum present.
Yeah, we should do that.
Okay.
It's a regular meeting.
I think, for the rest of you that didn't hear me say this, I did receive a call from Eileen Weiser. She's very close.
Well, I think we should start talking, though, if we can. I think, and Jeff and Heather, one, very much thank you, and I know you all are doing yeoman's work on trying to advance the RFP process, so we very much appreciate it. And I guess what I was wanting to open with is there's probably just a little confusion and maybe some frustration, I know among many board members, that it seemed like the process that we were on, which seemed pretty clear coming out of that last committee, which ended up being a full board meeting, about how we were going to proceed, that we would inform, you're putting out the RFQ, which is great, and did that and very timely, and got back some responses of two bidders, that since we definitely, that this meeting would be a moment when we could review together and rank and perhaps make a decision about which of those, if they met your tests, as the contracting agent for being credible and approvable, and that we, as a board, would then be able to decide which of them we liked better or we thought was strongest. And the, so I first just want to, there's a lot of sentiment that additional process steps seem to be for delays that may or may not be necessary, but I want to first hear, make sure I hear from you, what your, what your view is on why we can't move to review and make a decision about these two bidders, and understand that reasoning and logic, and talk about that, and see if there's a way we can move faster, per our schedule, which said even in the RFP, we would be making a decision in October, and now it seems they're encouraging another process step that would put us well into November, before we can even decide on the search firm. And failing some satisfaction on whether we can or cannot proceed, there certainly is an option for us to proceed without the benefit of resources from the state and a search firm, which I think would be very helpful, but we certainly could move, as we did last time, independently and search ourselves as a committee for the superintendent. So, I just wanted, and I would be very interested, again, in what's in the bids from the bidders, to see how helpful they could be, which we are just getting right now. And so we haven't really seen that. So, let's first talk about what, is there any good reason, and what are the reasons, and there may be some very good reasons, why there needs to be additional, hi, Eileen? We were just beginning by talking about, why are we at this moment appearing to, you know, not be ready to review and rank proposals with the assistance, and the first test being whether Jeff and his team view any of these entities as credible, that it would be appropriate to enter a contract, because if none of them do, then by all means, we should not.
Before we do that, can I move approval of the agenda and order of priority?
Support. So, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So, I just wanted to, but Jeff and Heather, and I talked to him briefly before the meeting, give some sort of perspective on why the process appears to be, from their point of view, taking more time, and what the rationale for that is, and any perspective on these two bidders and vendors, because again, I am curious on whether they provide significant capacity, and what's the help that we might get from them, but then let's talk about whether we want to, how we want to proceed after that, and I'm sure other board members have lots of questions to discuss about where we are and why we're where we are. So, Jeff, can you talk about what you're seeing right now? And again, I think it's probably unfair, because this may be more Craig in the governor's office, who did send emails suggesting that we were moving too hasty, and so that's part of the concern, is that I thought we were moving on the track that we had mutually agreed collectively.
So, what I would say in response to that opening, it's my responsibility as the chief-
Excuse me, I cannot hear.
All right. Okay, can you hear me now?
I can, thank you.
All right, sure. Okay, so in response to those questions, it's my responsibility, as the chief procurement officer for the state, to follow the provisions set forth in the DMV Act, Public Act 431, and protect the integrity of the procurement process from A to Z, right? I mean, that's nothing that you, I'm sure you already know, but in the course, and that's for the spending of state dollars, which is, to my knowledge, to this point, and prior to any subsequent conversation we might be about to have, is my understanding how this is going to work, that DTMB is funding the money for this search, okay? And it's my job to make sure that we follow a consistent process, consistent meaning consistent with every other process that we do, that we follow the same steps we normally do to work a contract, okay? To that end, to one of your questions, which was, do we have capable bidders, and that's where we might have a-
Question.
Maybe a misalignment of what it is that DTMB, myself and Heather are bringing to the table today, in terms of vetting whether these are viable vendors. They appear credible to me, but I am not an expert in understanding the folks that you're trying to find. So, this may be an excellent, well-written document, whether or not it's all-
True.
Make-believe, yes. Or any other, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know, and that's where I need experts like all of you to sift through them and say, yeah, this is, this looks credible. So, they have, you know, I'm making this up as a hypothetical, but if one of these firms has placed, you know, eight or 10 state superintendents throughout the United States, I look at that and I say, well, that looks pretty good. You might know how those searches turned out after a year. You know, if all eight of those people were fired, this response is not going to tell you that, but you guys know this field better than we do, right? So, I can look at it and say, well, it looks like a well-written response. That's about as much value as I can add. I can look at, okay, they have a history of having so many sales, and they look financially viable, which again, in a situation like this, isn't the biggest concern in the world, because it's a short-term contract, a short-term search. If they go belly-up two years from now, I'm not concerned about it. The point is, can they deliver what you need them to deliver in the next six to eight months? I don't know that answer, you do. And so, the only thing I can say about it is, they're well-written responses, but whether they hold any water, I can't judge that, and you all have to do that. Now, from a process integrity perspective, what I recommend is that we set forth criteria, as we had brought to the table before, we said we needed to do that. We need to tell these guys how they're going to be evaluated. We put that in the RFP, and it's now up to this team to judge, grade, whatever, where do you want to use. Their responses based on the criteria that we told them we were going to judge them on. Then we have to document that in a consensus-type of format, okay? So, this team, whoever the evaluation team is, and if that's all of us, that's all of us, if that's all of you and not me, let's have a discussion about that, because I do feel that they should be involved in that decision-making process, given the funds are coming from us. The next thing that we need to do is come up with a scoring mechanism. Now, it's, as I was telling John earlier-
Excuse me, I'm having a hard time hearing you as well. Could you be closer to the speaker? Thank you.
Sorry.
Try to get the microphone across the table.
Okay.
All right. As I was telling John earlier, it's my experience, and I don't mean for this to sound judgmental, but there's probably no other way it's going to sound, so I apologize in advance, but my experience says there's probably somebody involved in this decision-making process, one of you or more of you sitting here, that haven't read the RFP from cover to cover. That's generally what I see in this situation. And it would be unfair to the providers for us to judge their responses on a document that we haven't fully read. And again, it's just based on my experience, nothing more. I'm not accusing anybody of doing something or not doing anything, but I think it's prudent that everyone have the stack of materials together, the RFP, understand what you're going to be looking for as you read those responses, so that RFP lays out two sections, that says, we're going to look for this and this. We're going to look for this, and you're going to be judged upon these criteria.
Do you mean the RFP, do you mean the documents that were just sent to us?
I mean, the RFP, which was publicly released-
Oh, asking for the bid?
That's right.
Okay.
So, you need to read that document, soup to nuts, start to finish, to understand exactly what we're asking for, right? And some of you probably have done it, and that's great. I hope everyone has, but again, my experience says there's usually somebody in the room that has. So, I want everyone to understand what is exactly that we asked, and have that document sitting side by side as you're reading the responses, so that you can evaluate fairly and accurately the responses you received from, in this case, two vendors. Then we reconvene and put together a consensus scoring sheet that's defensible, because in the state process, there's a protest period. And so, it's possible, I would say it's probably unlikely, in this case, but I don't know, I can't tell the future, that you're going to award to one vendor, and the other vendor will say, no, I disagree with how the state scored that, and you open up a protest period. That's part of our process.
So, this actually is even longer, because then we have to have this protest period?
So, you will, yes, in fact, you're not going to walk out of this, you'll have a recommendation, okay? At that point, we will have, it might be a two-day protest period, it doesn't have to be like three weeks or anything like that, but you've got to have some opportunity, this is state procurement stuff, public procurement stuff, where we allow providers or vendors who did not win to critique the evaluation that we did, so they can't say, hey, well, by the way, Jeff Brownlee had a relationship, you know, this guy's his, you know, second cousin, and he awarded a bid to them. We offer those vendors an opportunity to do that kind of due diligence on their own and question our response, and we have to defend that, if that happens. Protest probably happened 3% of the time. It's unlikely, but it's a state procurement, public procurement best practice to offer that protest period. Again, it can be for two days, doesn't have to be anything crazy. At that point, we can move forward with signing a contract.
Well, I thought we were going to be reviewing the proposals.
Right.
And we haven't even seen the proposals yet. We just got the names of the companies, and we don't even know who the people are.
And I guess, Jeff, I appreciate that, and I really truly do, there's, if we're spending state money, the collective, we need to follow the right process and make sure we're doing this in public, and so I certainly understand and appreciate those mechanics that are important to do. I think what we had hoped, and what it seemed like we were headed for, was this meeting would be armed with the proposals, which I gather you've had for several days, you could have, maybe, or the state could have offered those proposals back to us, give us instructions on how we should be ranking them based on RFP, so that at this meeting, we could do that job of doing the add-up of our rankings and working through that together and coming out with some score, or whatever, that then you could take through your protest period, et cetera. That didn't, we didn't, we're not ready, we're not doing that. So, I just want to make clear, what is now being proposed is that we just go over kind of the process at this meeting, and you're proposing November 10th or beyond would be the time to come together and grade and rank, and then we'd have to have a protest period, et cetera, which would, I just want to make clear that the timing of various scenarios would put us late November at the earliest into even beginning to identify the search firm that we, I just, I want people to understand, any search firm we identify, we're going to have to sit down again with them, in the AG, and fashion the full description of what we want and timeframe, et cetera, so we've got, there's a lot of additional activities, once we have the search firm identified, to get that entity up and running, so.
I'm not sure that's the case, why you need so much time. What do you need with the AG that I'm not familiar with?
Well, there are some large issues around, let's say, as we said in the RFP, part of the search firm's job is to send out a communication broadly and actively call people to invite them to participate in an open opportunity to apply, that would have some timeframe, maybe a couple of months. That articulation has to say, can those, can bidders or applicants be treated in confidence? How will the process unfold whereby their material will be reviewed either by the search process firm and screened on our behalf, or we, as a full board, need to look at all the material? All of those are issues we have to be very clear about, even before, with the search firm and with the AG, as we, before we go out and invite people in, has to be very clear how they're treated throughout the whole process. So, there's work to do with the search firm to even open a window where people can apply, which is similar to the work we're doing with you all, just to pick a search firm.
So, are those contractual arrangements you would have between you and the search firm?
Those are-
Or behavioral?
Those, think about a solicitation for a superintendent, apply has to spell out, here's how this process will unfold, here's how you will be treated, and here's how decisions and scrutiny of your material will be made, and by whom, involving the search firm and the board. And that all has to be carefully articulated, to be right, based on how we need to do things for public meetings and process.
Understood, and so my question is, are those types of parameters, guidelines, rules, whatever you want to call them, are those contractual terms that should exist between the state's relationship, in the relationship between the state and the search firm? Are those things you want to call it in a contract, that say, hey, search firm, you can do X, Y, and Z, but you can't do A, B, and C?
Well, I-
I don't, I'm just trying to understand, when you say we're going to have the AG's office involved, from what perspective, just simply advising you on something, or advising you on a contract between you and a search firm?
No, I think the advice from the AG's office comes into play to make sure that we're following the Open Meetings Act, which, for us, for the search, everything has to be done in public, and so that's where their role would come in, is to make sure that we're doing everything appropriately.
Just by way of illustration, just for a search firm to develop a full solicitation package for national distribution, as we call for in the work program, exactly what that solicitation says to prospective candidates about how they will be treated, how decisions will be made, by whom and in what form will screening happen, all of that, we need to review together and agree on with the AG's advice, so before that can go out. I was just noting that even once we get a search firm under contract, we've got another round of real work to do.
Okay, post-contract.
Right.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Why does that have to be done post-contract? Why can't that be done in the interim?
Well, we don't know who we're going to pick until we've done whatever we're doing.
But those parameters for the openness of the search are going to be for any firm.
True.
So, maybe we should be picking our way through that and thinking whether that's actually sequential, or whether it can be concurrent with this process.
I think it, there's so many issues, like exactly how much of a window for time do we want to invite people in, that we need to have the search firm and ourselves agree on, so.
Well, that definitely is sequential, but some of the things that might be a delay with the AG's office could be handled concurrently.
And we've had some of those discussions, I'm just suggesting there's, there's a lot of, there are many issues to work through, as each step of the road, even selecting the search firm, well past that, the bigger issues are past selecting the search firm, if we select one at all. So, given, just make sure people have the scenarios, if, for us to proceed with investing a search firm based on, again, the good work and appropriate work, I think, Jeff and Heather, I'm not suggesting you're doing anything beyond what you should be doing. You're proposing it would be another month-plus to work through scoring, picking of, you know, protest period, and just getting to a moment we select the search firm.
No, I would disagree with that. I don't think it needs to take a month-plus. I think if, what I would suggest is a minimum, I think a minimum is if we were to agree that we could get together in that time slot on 11/7, which if I'm not mistaken, is a Friday, is a Friday, so Friday the 7th, and this team was to come to a consensus agreement that day, we could post our intent to award to that firm later that day, which begins your protest period. We could do that for three business days, which gets you out to the 12th of November, assuming no issues and no protests. You can have a contract signed on the 13th of November.
And today is the 21st.
Just, just-
Twenty-second.
I'm literally out of the country every one of these days, but that may not matter.
I just want to, I just want to get the time scenarios on the table, and there's no ability or interest in having that meeting next week to speed things up.
Not for me, no.
Is that because you're not available, or?
Absolutely. I have to chair this thing, so it's my job.
Well, and again-
That's why I tried to give as many opportunities I could, I mean, we can go out further than that, but that's-
I still don't understand why we didn't get the proposals before this meeting.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what this meeting's for. It's not what I thought it was for. I don't know what we're doing today. Are we just receiving proposals?
To be honest with you.
I think the difference lies in the fact that the last time we did this, I'm trying to remember, the three of us were on the board, and is that it?
We did it ourselves.
Right, and when I was on the board, both for Mike and for Tom Watkins, we did it ourselves. So, this is the lack of familiarity with the state RFP process and the contract letting. We just didn't, we're in some ways being ambushed by lack of knowledge, and I didn't think to ask at our meeting how it would lay itself out, what would happen. We talked about a bit of the process, but we didn't look beyond getting the RFP out and getting the responses back, so.
Tony, we did it in the past, we did it ourselves, is that still an option?
Well-
Certainly is an option.
Yeah.
You can, if you're looking at state candidates only, so it's much harder, and I think to-
Couldn't we advertise in national-
We had out-of-state candidates.
Well, we had Tom Watkins, that's true, I mean, for sure, so.
No, we had out-of-state candidates, I got a call from an out-of-state candidate of another state.
Yeah.
2000 had a search firm, 2004, when we, after we fired Tom, we did not engage a search firm, and we did have both in-state and out-of-state applicants, however, modestly, much more modestly, the position was advertised and recruitment happened.
I think you send a powerful message, if you can't look at this as a three-week delay for the widest possible net with really good controls. I think you just want to think about that before you take a vote on foregoing professional advice.
At my fear, it's not a three-week delay. I mean, this, two weeks, now it's three weeks, and then it'll be three more weeks, and, you know, it just seems like this has been delay after delay after delay, and, you know, I just, I feel like at some point, we have to move forward.
And there's, again, Jeff, not your responsibility, there's also an issue of, the state board is the committee of the whole searching for the superintendent, of our sort of control and driving that train. We are, we certainly benefit and welcome if the state makes budget resources available, and we appreciate that your office has to make a determination about the appropriate quality of any vendor. What I think there's a distinction that we would need to continue, if we continue to take advantage of those resources, is you're making resources available, the state is, thank you, to support a search, which would be very helpful, because I agree with Eileen, we would benefit from a search firm, particularly if they're any good, but we don't know that yet, I would really love to read who they are. But we would want you to help certify, as you're proposing, that they're of quality and warrant a contract of spending the public's money, but then we, as a board, decide and guide on who, which of the vendors and who we like, sort of picking from quality capital. There's a little bit of an issue of a process that is outside of, getting outside of our control, direct control, and keeps slipping in terms of changing the contours of that process. I'm just flagging that as an issue, so.
I also had a question, if I could. The two bidders, are they the total, I mean, there wasn't any filtering out of anybody who may have bid, it's like, are those the total amount of, because I was under the impression that another organization was going to bid, and I don't see their name here.
Yeah, those were the only two responses that we received at all, and in fact, there was a question-answer period in the middle, where any prospective bidders, not just people intended to respond, but anyone, anyone could have submitted a question or notified us of anything, and we didn't hear from anyone.
And I'm wondering why this, another bidder who everybody liked did not bid, but that's neither here nor there, because they did not-
There was radio silence on our end until we received the two bids that showed up at the final day. I don't know, Heather, if you had any conversations with anybody else, but those are the two that I know of.
I had one that emailed in to say that they were not responding.
Do you know who that was?
Can't hear you, is that Eileen?
No, that's-
No, it's Heather, we had one bidder, I guess, contacted to say they weren't responding.
Is her first name Amanda?
Amanda Coleman?
Yes.
Onramps, I think you-
I can't hear you, Heather.
Amanda?
From Onramps?
From what?
Onramps.
Oh.
A search firm called Onramps.
Oh.
If that was one of the firms that we had been in touch with before.
There were three firms and entities that the committee prior, Dan chaired, found as quality firms, and those three were anticipating that there would be a search or an RFQ, and one of those three responded, so.
We contacted all of them.
We notified them and sent them the proposals directly.
Right, I'm just saying, one of the three chose to make an application. So, what do people want to do, any other questions to, do people want to spend another three weeks plus to get to a moment of picking a search firm with some, still, a little uncertainty about if that would hold, or do they want to pursue a search ourselves? I am reassured there are a lot of quality applicants who are interested in the job, which is good, I agree. I think a search firm, particularly if they were good, could be very helpful in broadening the outreach and helping us do things like vet and screen on our behalf, the winnow the field, that would be very helpful. But I'm not, I'm not sure if it's, if we keep having process, if new process issues emerge, because we are trying to take advantage of resources to help, if it's going to be satisfactory. But what do other people think, and what are other questions people have?
Well, for one thing, I'm disappointed that there were only two firms that responded. I don't, there's only a week, really, that they had.
Kathy, we can't hear you.
The issue date of this thing was, the request for the RFP was October 7th, and they had to respond by October 15th. That part was compressed. That's a very short time.
So, can I respond to that?
Yeah, okay.
That was, that was our encouragement.
In your direction, I would love to have this thing out for a month. That was not, that was not us. You asked how far I could be, and I'll give you a minimum.
That was to comply with our, with our schedule?
Absolutely.
Well, then, why didn't we learn about the rest of the things that had to be done before today, or last night, whenever we got this email, late last night?
Well, and again, I'm not trying to put this all on Jeff, I think there may be other discussions about moving this process, for whatever reason, after the election, which, if we're proceeding, as we said, to pick April, we have plenty of time after the election to look for people, so I hope that none of that was coming into play. But I think there, we were basically, I thought, I mean, the only disappointment I have, at the last meeting we had, it seemed like, yes, we've got some people waiting for this, yes, we'll open up to more bidders, which we did get. Jeff and Heather, you make sure that you're comfortable with a solicitation and a window. If you are, great, we'll get back who we get back, and we'll not need to do the kind of screening and grading and decision-making that, so that's, my disappointment was that we're not using this meeting to make the decision-making, and that we now have three or four weeks of new process that emerged. Again, not putting blame on any particular place. So, I just, where we, given where we are, yeah, Richard. For what it's worth, when I was at the NASB annual meeting, they announced that they were going back into this, into the superintendent placement business, and I understand that's either November or December, that the-
that's either November or December that they're going to be open. So if we were to delay another month and they had a shot at it, I'd, I'd be favorable to that.
But then we'd have to open up the whole process again, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And what is the process?
Is that what we're, I thought that's what we're talking about since when we had a week's?
No, I, I think the question is, do we want to spend the next month reviewing two proposals, or do we want to say, you know what, maybe we need to just go for it on our own, since the board has done it in the past, and just do it again?
We have the job description, we know what we're looking for, we just need a process of communication, articulation, and clarity around how we're going to treat people and that, all that worked out.
I think it'd be smart to articulate why, if we're not replacing our superintendent until April, with him supposed to be leaving on June 1st, that we're pushing so hard that we, we just pushed, and we've only ended up with two applicants, because we pushed to get a small window. Now we're saying that that's not going to work, that we have to push to get candidates in right now. And everybody I've ever talked to, I've brought this up numerous times before, but everybody I've ever talked to said that it goes very quickly once you have everything in place, that candidates apply, you have maybe seven days to 10 days, you've got to, with the public process, get them in here for interviews with the transparency that we require. We don't have the luxury of a private institution or a private for-profit who can take all the time they want behind closed doors to interview people. So I, I'm, I'm struggling, because I'm hearing several things. I'm hearing, one, gosh, we wish we had more applicants, but that would have taken a longer period of time, or maybe a different window after the election. Two, there are other search firms that we would have liked to have seen included, and I have no idea what it would take at this point, whether we have to close this down and declare that these people are not, if we were to open it up to try and get more applicants in for a longer period, whether we have to do something to truncate this process. But the third one is that the entire thrust of this board has been to try and do things really professionally, and we're just now talking about, because this isn't meeting by three weeks or possibly four, just dumping the whole thing and going off on our own, which makes no sense to me at all, so.
Well, I just, and I work for an organization that hires by committee and approval of board, and it never goes quickly. I mean, that's my experience. It takes at least, I mean, once you identify a candidate, just getting to that point, then you've got at least another month until you get board approval, assuming you have a core, I mean, there's all kinds of things that can happen. So from my experience, it actually, it's not a seven to 10-day thing, it's, it's a long process.
No, it's a process, there's, there's a, here's what happens, having watched many searches in, in the education arena, is that you get people who, once they're known publicly, need a decision, because they will have, their, their people will start looking for, to replace them, if we don't. So that, that's the oddity of this, is, is that once they're in here for an interview, our process, we, we don't have a long time to make a decision before we start losing candidates. And I think that's, that may be the difference. Are your, are your searches public?
Well, I was actually in that scenario. People knew I had, I was selected weeks before I was approved, so, I mean, you deal with it, it's, it's part of.
But the approval part is different, Cassandra. We can, this board can convene on, well, how much public notice do we need, five days? That part of it, and our willingness to convene today illustrates that we can act nimbly, should the right candidate be there.
Dan, you chaired the original look at, really, a tight year-long, whenever we started, of process, of which we moved through the first six months. And if you look at our timetable, there are significant and even additional time needs from post-selecting a search firm, to, as I said, developing that solicitation appropriately, to having a month or two, whatever we decide, of an opportunity for apply and for us to reach out, a search firm to reach out, to having an iterative series of vetting, background checks, winnowing of the field, identification of finalists, all of that is month, month, month. So we're, we'd be hard-pressed to hit April if we were on track.
It wasn't the last two times, I beg to differ on this.
I, I was in the first, the last two times, and the first one, I, you, you were on the board in 2000, you started a search that summer, and it ended with a decision in April, just like we were proposing.
Just a minute, when did the applications come in, the interviews, and then to the hire? That period is what I'm talking about, which was probably about two months. That's the part that I'm talking about. So when I look at this extension for four, five months right now, six months, November, December, January, February, March, April, six months, I'm trying to figure out why you would consider going solo on this, when we have two search firms, one of whom may be really spectacular, but it might eat up a month of that six months, and that still has.
What if the search firms are both done?
Well, and that's why, is there anything we can do right now? I'm interested in the quality of these search firms, whether we're missing a lot from the two if we decide to go our own way, or whether, no, they really do look interesting, which might color a determination about, let's take the next few moments, let's take some time to, to vet one or two of them. If they're really good, it might be worth it. If they're not, if we're not missing much, then it certainly isn't.
Yeah, can we look at the proposals?
Absolutely. So what you have here is you have an RFP, and you have two responses. One of the responses is in two, two stapled packets, so they go together.
Did you all, did you get an email on this, you folks at home?
Really irritating as anything.
Yeah, they, I called John, and they had it.
Curious about this.
John, here I called, and they all came in.
Thank you. Or you got emails from others earlier?
Right, and I forwarded them to the 31.
Why don't we take a few minutes and look through these, and just get some perspective on who these people are? It looks like Ray Associates is saying they're going to partner with Quinn and Associates, and Tim Quinn was the well-liked additional person.
Yeah, that's, so that's encouraging.
Dan, you and others were encouraging.
Oh, Gary, this is a different Ray Associates than I thought. That's interesting.
They do, it's been emailed, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
So one other point I would just like to make is, as you're considering this delay, I think it's, it's, it's being communicated as more of a delay than it is, because again, there would be no way, even if it had been your presumption that we would walk out of here with a decision today, you would still enter that whole protest and contract execution thing, which means at best, you're going to have this thing signed several days from now, okay, it would be done today, in any situation. The delay is really two weeks and two days, from today's meeting to the, at minimum, the meeting I suggested on the 7th, so I just don't want folks to see that it's a, it's a multi-month delay or something, it's really two weeks and two days.
This group never gets together on the first proposed day. We have, we have eight different schedules we have to match, and like I said, you don't have to worry about mine, because I'm out of the country, so I guess you only have to worry about 7.
So November 7th does work for me both times. There's only one that doesn't work, one day that doesn't.
I'm just, I'm just reflecting that Ray and Company's proposal, their timeline, this is why, you know, having a search firm means thoughtful input into modification of the timeline. They were saying, even if they started like right now, there would be a deadline for application materials after all the process of February of 2015.
Mm-hmm.
And they, they look very good on paper, from what I've seen to date, and it would be very helpful. So just per your point, Eileen, there's, there's steps in the road here that need to be made.
Yes, but they, you know, they're talking about releasing the, offering the contract in April, they're, they're saying that they can meet the schedule as it is, which gave three months, May, June, it gave two months for overlap. Yes.
Forty-one, nine, two, five for Ray and Associates.
Although they do say it's subject to change, it's based on the expenses that they itemized, which may be different from the ones that Ray proposed.
They're both estimates.
So the base fee for Ray and Associates is $30,000. Is there a base fee for? Okay.
State of Nebraska for the other, I noticed that on their webpage, the only statewide one there. Oh, no, Illinois State Department of Education. Robert Schiller, oh, they hired Schiller for Illinois.
In Illinois, they hired him?
Think they'll bring him back.
Oh, my God.
He was superintendent here at one point, for a brief moment in time, I think, but.
If you look at.
Longer than you choose to remember.
But they like him there.
That was a local ship at the time, we felt like he was here a long time.
How long was he here, for?
At least a few years.
They also placed Derek Smith, who was there for six years in Florida.
We don't know.
What? Oh. Well, the good news is, for evaluation, with Cassandra heading out of the country, it's not like there's 15 with three that you'd agonize over.
Well, I was, I'm happy to flip a coin today and pick one, but I don't think Jeff would go for that, and then, nor should you.
He's shaking his head no.
To protect the taxpayers' hard-earned dollars.
Yeah, for the three people on the phone, he's shaking his head no.
What I don't understand is why we didn't get this information before today.
Right.
The description of the, what you said to us last night.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you clearly.
Oh, I said, I cannot understand why we didn't get this information before today. We got the description of the time that all these things were supposed to do last night, late last night.
I understand your frustration.
And I'm very angry about it, because it was no point coming here today.
Yeah.
If we couldn't do, if we couldn't make a decision, we could just make a decision.
Right, you're beating on the wrong person, so.
I'm not, I'm not angry at them, I'm angry at the process. I don't understand why this couldn't have been told to us before that we had to.
When was the bidding over, when did these bids come in?
The 9th.
The 15th. The 9th?
The 15th.
I'm sorry, the 15th, I'm talking about the day it was early.
The 15th it had to come in, today, that's a week ago.
And I think, if I recall, at, at our last meeting, it was agreed that when you got them in, they would be shoveled over en masse to Maryland, and also, if you had time, and when you had time, you would provide the kind of guidance on how we should be reviewing them that you, you shared just today. Again, I, I think this is one of the bigger, this is a bigger issue, is benefiting from administration's help in getting budget resources, we are suffering from administration's control and changes in the process, which, which is the double-edged sword. So I think these are good bidders, it looks like. We would be well-served if we could select one to help us. Do we want to take another month to agree on which of these likely, if they pan out, we'd pick, and, but also give up a measure of control of the process as we take advantage of the administration's resources, and, and might, we might see additional unpredictable influence from the governor's office and others on this process, if we're taking resources that are being arranged through the good offices of same.
And is it more accurate to say it's three weeks? Because we were saying it'd be two weeks and two days from now, if people could meet on the 10th. So maybe part of your, your answer to that, John, is to see whether people can meet on the 10th, and at least then we know what the delay is. And then, he's talking about the following Wednesday, if we agree at that point, following Wednesday.
Good, good information. Can everybody except Cassandra meet on the 10th of November?
I'd like to have Cassandra's input.
I definitely want Cassandra's input, but I'm also, if we were to proceed, I'm not, I'm not worried about the quality ranking of, of these proposals.
The 7th or the 10th?
I'm sorry.
Whatever you guys decide, it's fine.
The 7th is a Friday, it's two weeks from, two days, two, two weeks, two days from today.
Cassandra's not coming back till the 17th, right?
The 7th is fine with me.
Right.
When are you leaving, Cassandra?
Uh, the 5th.
There's no, there's no way on earth that we can get it done before she leaves?
Well, I think the other question is, what happens?
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, what happens if all eight of us are in concurrence on the same firm? Or, you know, what is it that we're worried about, that Cassandra might be part of a, you know, a 5-3 or 6-2 vote on one firm versus the other, because.
Well, I'm just wondering if she could, if it could be arranged before she leaves, that's all.
Absolutely, but I, I also am looking at what could, what could, what, what, what part of this would be problematic that she couldn't participate in?
Well, definitely, if, if what you're suggesting, if you were doing what you said you could do, is give us guidance on how to score, and we would independently score and rank these proposals, which could be done before any next meeting, and Cassandra could do that if we went this route, we'd have the benefit of her scoring. And as long as, if we had a majority of the board, we could add those up and have a discussion with the majority and have Cassandra's input. I'm just looking for a way to benefit from that input towards the collective decision, which would be made at a public meeting.
And may I ask also what the FOIA?
Have those documents be public.
Sorry, what the FOIA note is down on here in the bullets?
Yeah, I just wanted to just remind everyone that all the documents that are involved in this are, are subject to FOIA, and you guys are in an open meeting, so you get that concept very clear. I just want to make sure everyone was aware of that. That's it, just a reminder.
It's not a separate step?
Nope, not at all.
So the proposals are public?
Are the applicants FOIA-able? No.
What was that question?
People apply, that's not, that's not FOIA-able, is it?
I would.
Unhinged decisions are, is that?
Their names become public the moment we start talking about them, at the moment.
But they look, they look fine.
No, that's, that's, Michelle, that's one of the issues, we have to have very clear guidance from the AG. I believe that the process can unfold where people apply and can choose to remain confidential up to a certain point, when, if they are being considered as a finalist, they must be public.
Right.
And so having that exactly delineated, and it delineated in the communication to applicants.
Earlier, it's earlier than that. They, they become public pretty early in the process.
But you know, we can refer to them early if they're not going to be interviewed.
For a while.
Pardon me? I didn't hear you, Michelle.
Michelle, can you repeat that?
My understanding, from the way it goes at Wayne State, is that it is held as being, you don't reveal, it doesn't seem that revealed until it's the finalist.
Yeah, it's completely, Michelle, it's completely different for Wayne State, they operate under different rules than we do.
I don't, yeah.
Yeah.
The universities operate under different rules, but we can refer to candidates by letter or number, we don't have to refer to them by name until they're becoming, until we want to interview them.
Yeah, can we?
I think he can't hear you, I think that.
Can we decide which way to go? Can we? So the 7th is the potential first date. Jeff, can, is it, is it possible for us, between now and then?
Like Michelle's asking.
We just did it.
Well, Michelle's just asking now.
And that's why--
Questions that should be answered.
One of the, one of the things we have gotten clear guidance on is, we can't have a committee of the board, even a committee with DTMB, make decisions. We have to have the full board make decisions, so, but I guess, to the best of your knowledge, is it, can we, with your guidance, grade and report back our rankings, have that next meeting on the 7th, if that were the earliest time, be the time we review that, build that consensus with whatever information coming out of that that you need, and have that decision-making meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so I think if we want to do that, then I think, A, let's see if we agree that that's what we want to do, and B, any other issues that force change in this that are driven from other issues administration has, apart from your office? For me, will mean that's one bridge too far. We're going to just begin our own search at that time. We will not continue if we face any more complications. Again--
And open live--
Say a question?
No, no, that's just, I'm just for the record saying that, if we, if some new wrinkle emerges that suggests that we can't proceed as we just agreed and had some reassurance from Jeff that we think we can, then that's it for me. And we will not, I would recommend we won't proceed with a search firm and resources from the administration.
I think you also need to make sure you have five members who can be in, present in Lansing.
Right, so do we have five members? What were the time on November 7th?
There's two times. I only know that because--
I can only make it from 10:30 to 12.
I have to cancel what I was doing anyway for either time, so I can make both times.
What are you, what are you talking about?
Friday the 7th.
I need to know the time, what are the times?
What are the times?
On the 7th, it's 10:30 to 12, or 1 to 3.
I think I could do 1 to 3.
And this, you have to be in Lansing, because you have to have a quorum here.
Right, I can, I think I can do it. I have an executive board meeting in the morning, but--
I can do either of those times.
I have to fly.
Thank you.
I can do either one.
I can have 8 to 1, please.
So that's, so that eliminates somebody. You can make 10:30 to 12, and Michelle can make 1 to 3. What about the 10th?
I can do either one.
What about the 10th?
I have a second board meeting.
No, that's--
Two people will be absent right now. Cassandra will be absent, and neither Lupe or Michelle.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Kathleen?
I think I'm good.
I'll give you a ride.
Well--
10:30, or why are we talking either?
Do we have to do it on the 7th? Could we do it on the 10th? Is everybody available on the 10th?
I'm available on the 10th.
On the Monday?
Yeah.
I am, too.
Only in the morning for me.
I am, I am not all day, but some 3 to 5, I can be available.
You can on the 10th?
That's much harder for me. I can do them in the morning.
You can't do in the morning, though, right, Jeff?
It would depend, because it's much more harder.
I gave like every two-hour block I had. Let's see, there's how many minutes I can--
So on this--
Wrong month, sorry.
On the 10th, we'd lose Cassandra and Dan.
On the 7th, we'd lose Cassandra, either Michelle or Lupe.
It's the same, either way.
All right. I personally think the sooner the better, given this discussion, so I would say the 7th, at which of those times was the right one?
Depends on who you want to miss.
I can do either one.
I can do the later one, and Lupe can do the earlier one.
I could back up the 10th to 1 o'clock if that helped, but--
You could move the 10th up to 1 o'clock?
But that still doesn't work for Richard from Monday. Monday?
On Monday?
Yeah.
I'd have to be back by 5, so if we got out by--
We can do it 1 o'clock on the 10th. We pick up Richard.
Who do we get on Monday, Monday the 10th at 1 PM?
We lose, Dan, could you do that?
At what time?
1 PM.
1.
You know, I mean, I mean, I'll, you know what, I'll make it work.
You could go by phone, right? If we have five people there?
Yeah, I'm here, Kathleen's here, Eileen's here.
I can do it.
Michelle, you're here.
I could, I could definitely call in.
Lupe, can you be here in person on the 10th? Or, Richard?
Yeah, what time did you all--
1 o'clock.
1 o'clock?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I can make it at 1 o'clock.
Okay. All right, does that sound good? Are you, are you okay?
It's, I'm the same either way, so it doesn't matter.
No, I know, but I mean, how are people, is this what people want to do?
Yeah, that's--
Yeah, I just want to be clear that the, so Jeff is saying that we can have a, once we decide, we can have a contract signed within like 48 hours?
Once you have that protest.
Provided, provided you don't have any protest issues from the opposing vendor. Only the opposing vendor did. The vendor you don't pick and choose, you can't have--
Because we can always gin up some protesters for the meeting and get the protesting over with--
You can't have, you can't have a third firm in this example coming and protesting to say, only, only--
With the other firm that didn't get it.
So you're saying, I'm like, when the 13th?
And how much time do they have for that?
So it could be a day.
Three business days.
We've got 48 hours.
48 hours. Two business days.
Okay.
Correct, thank you.
So by the 13th in the morning, we can have a signed contract?
Or in the afternoon.
Yeah, so on the 3--
Yeah.
And, okay, so let's do this. And we will continue, we will investigate, and I'll get Cassandra's help with the AG's issues, just all the issues, because we need to revisit. I was just trying to get the AGs working us through this piece of the process, and now make sure we're clear on all the next pieces per Eileen's part. And I guess, by way, I'm glad we looked at the proposals. It solves the Tim Quinn mystery. He was smartly adopted by Ray and Associates, is someone that a healthy cross-section of stakeholders in Michigan know well and view as very helpful, from Craig Ruff to Roberta Stanley, to many others. So, anyway, well, this is good. Again, Jeff and Heather, apologies to you for just the awkwardness of this discussion, because I know you are doing your job, so appreciate that very, very much.
So we're trying to do ours.
I know, we're trying to do ours, yeah.
Jeff, I can give one clarification, just so we don't get the 10th and have a discrepancy. The 11th is a holiday?
Yes.
So--
So it'd be Thursday.
It would be Thursday.
Okay.
The 11th is a holiday?
State holiday.
Armistice Day.
Veteran--
Yeah, they can't reach the state to protest. They might be working, but they can't reach Jeff to yell.
And--
You can't let them stay off anymore.
Don't get the summers off.
So, so we are very clear, whatever format of grading sheet that you prepare will be shared, you will do that and share that with us, and we will fill it out, and that will give you what you think we need to have that discussion.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But we'll get it before the night before the meeting, right?
Right. I mean, that could be done almost, I mean, very soon, and then we have time to send it back in, and--
In a day or two, that's enough.
And we will have Cassandra's input, and I would encourage everybody to offer back in any other editorial perspectives, including Cassandra, as they review these two proposals in more detail. That would be helpful in the discussion of whether one is worthy of picking or not.
One question for you all, on the scoring sheet, I wouldn't normally do this, but given that Cassandra will be out, would it make sense to have a comments field so you can capture any thoughts she has on a particular--
That's good. And is there any reason legally why Cassandra can't share with one, like the board president, or somebody else, or the board secretary? Any clarifications? It's only if we get into a quorum, it's only if there was a, you know, caucus meeting or something, that that would be an issue.
There's no, no issues from my process perspective, if you have an open meetings issue, you need to work out that--
It's separate.
I would think this would not be a partisan thing at all.
No, I'm just saying that there's six, you know, if you guys were talking internally, that you can't do that and have her comments be valid, because there's an open meetings issue. There would be anyway.
Right?
Yeah.
I don't know what you're talking about.
I don't understand. You don't have to worry about it. We're all tired.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for making the extra effort to participate and pull this together.
Okay, nice, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm officially adjourned in this meeting, I guess.
Thank you.
I'll give you back this, I printed mine out, so I could read it.
The only thing I want to add is, I noted here that that meeting has to be an hour and a half minimum, the one on the 10th.
Well, that's your suggestion of how much time is needed.
Yeah, those are my times, saying this is when I can, when we could have a meeting.
By, you're saying the meeting--
You can do 30 minutes and take 30 minutes.
Oh, okay, great.
Does it have to be a minimum?
Well, and we just want to, given all this, we just want to make sure we get out of that meeting exactly what's needed, so that we don't face any other, oh, by the way, now we have to do this, you know, so. From, for the appropriate vetting and approval process that you all need to do. Thank you.
No, please.